Let's go ahead and get started. Mayor Piercy is in China, and Greg Evans is not available today, so I'm presiding as Council Vice President. And we have two things on the agenda. First, the West Eugene Enterprise Zone and e-commerce zone, and then we'll go into executive session. And I have a script to read when we go into executive session, and we'll ask the -- except for the press, the audience to leave the room. Denny?
So this is a continuation of the May 23 work session where we provided a detailed overview of the West Eugene Enterprise Zone and the e-commerce zone. At that work session, council expressed interest in considering re-designation of both the Enterprise Zone and the e-commerce zone, with both of those scheduled to expire on June 30th. Today, there are two resolutions for you to consider. The first would authorize the city manager to apply to the state of Oregon for re-designation of the West Eugene Enterprise Zone for 10 more years. The Enterprise Zone designation, as you recall, is not a competitive process, so in effect, your action, if you approve the resolution, would basically be to re-designate the zone. Applying to the state is basically a formality at this point in the program. The second resolution relates to the e-commerce zone, which again would authorize the city manager to apply for re-designation of that zone. It's an overlay on the Enterprise Zone. And again, there are only 15 e-commerce zones throughout the state. There are 69 Enterprise Zones throughout the state, so this is a more competitive process. In fact, it's highly competitive. So again, if there's interest in moving forward, we would want to make sure that we're ready to apply on July 1st for that e-commerce zone. If the two resolutions are adopted, we would have Lane County Board take a similar action. They're a joint sponsor of our Enterprise Zone, and we've already had a work session with the county board to provide the same kind of overview that we provided to council on the 23rd. Also, at the May 23 work session, council expressed an interest in updating the local public benefit criteria that is attached to our West Eugene Enterprise Zone program. We've proposed a process that mirrors the process that was created back in 2005 when we actually created the criteria. There's an outline in Attachment D, and there's a proposed motion that would move that process forward if you choose to do that. Basically, the proposal is to re-establish the Public Benefit Criteria Review Committee to include two city councilors, two Lane County Board of Commissioners, and then four community members, two appointed by the council, two appointed by the county board. And generally, the process would include some initial meetings to review, make recommendations about modifications to the criteria. And because the public benefit criteria is adopted by ordinance, there would be a public hearing to get input from or for on any proposed modifications to that criteria. The city council and the Lane County Board again would jointly need to take action on any changes to that criteria, and the existing public benefit criteria would remain in place until modifications are adopted. So with that, I'm open for questions.
All right. Anybody have any questions? I have one. So the purpose of the committee, the third motion that we'll be taking up, that you'll be putting on the table, right?
Yes, I will.
And you'll be second.
George will second.
Our --
George will second.
George will second, okay.
Second senior.
Is to discuss the public benefits criteria that we put forward. That's these criteria that were in the attachment?
That is correct.
Attached to the '05 ordinance?
Yeah. And you know, I think what we heard is 10 years have passed, and maybe it's time to relook at them and at least modernize them or look at them to make sure they're still relevant.
Yeah, two questions I had about that. One was the number four, the wages. It says 2005 median wage. I'm assuming that that one actually was indexed to the current year's median wage every time it came up, but it doesn't actually say that.
Yeah, I'd have to -- yeah, I think you're correct. Yeah, and definitely, as we go forward, we would definitely want to index. I think that's in the either the ordinance or the administrative rule. I have to go back, but I think it is, yeah.
Because we wouldn't want it stuck at 2005 forever. That's silly. And then the second question I had was, so if we wanted to add a criteria to this, that's the process to do it in. For instance, one of the things I noticed that since this was quite a long time ago, over a decade, there's no sustainability or climate change criteria in here at all. So that might be something that we'd want to add to it. I know that the city of Albany or Corvallis, and I'm forgetting which one, has a pretty robust criteria around that in their Enterprise Zone as well. So that would be something I'd be very interested in seeing moved forward as an additional criteria. I spawned questions. Chris, Betty, and then Mike.
As one of the participants in the first Enterprise Zone group, and since the bulk of the Enterprise Zone is in my ward, I would hope that I would also be involved in the next committee. Part of that process is to have the council representatives bring with them guidance and ideas from the council, so that as you go into that discussion process, you're not going in just as an individual, you're going in as someone representing the council's interests. So there would be back-and-forth conversation opportunities to say, these are the interests that the council has in this conversation.
Mike, and then Betty.
Thank you. I should have asked you this sooner, Glenn. I apologize, but this is a -- if one of us -- but this coming up potentially for a vote, the question can't wait for later. If one of us hypothetically were investigating employment with a company within that zone, would that constitute a potential conflict that should be?
At most, it would constitute a potential. Certainly wouldn't be an actual. I'm not even sure that it would rise to the level of potential unless that company has already been having conversations about applying for an Enterprise Zone exemption at some point after July 1. So if hypothetically, one of you were considering employment in some company that is located within the Enterprise Zone, the company has no plans to expand, there wouldn't be a potential conflict. So it's not just because the company is located in the Enterprise Zone area. There would have to be some indication, you know, the company would have already had to start having conversations about, well, maybe we're going to expand and go seek that exemption. If that was happening, then again, if you need an answer off the top of my head, it's I'd say declare that there's a potential conflict, because with a potential conflict, having declared it, you now get to participate.
Yeah, I'll just say that then that because anything is nothing more than a conversation that's taken place at this point, so I'll declare a potential conflict, yeah.
Okay, and now you just participate regularly.
All right.
Or irregularly.
I thought we were leaving the Steve Martin stuff out.
Thank you.
That was it.
If someone gets this tax exemption, which obviously they're going to, but do they have to stay any certain length of time? Can they just stay three years and then leave? Or five years, if they get five years exemption?
Yeah, the only, and this is by state statute, the only disqualification of their tax exemption can happen during the period that they're receiving the tax exemption. After they've received the tax exemption, we have no ability to penalize them in any way.
So they could stay for, till the exemption runs out, then leave, and there's no?
There would be no penalty after the end of the third year.
Okay, thank you.
But they get no exemption after that third year either.
Get no exemption after they're gone now.
Right. Claire, and then George.
Thank you. So I'm just curious, in your presentation to the Board of Commissioners, if you discussed this reconvening of the Public Benefits Criteria Committee, and if so, what kind of response or feedback, if any, you got about it?
We made them aware of the council's expressed interest in reconvening some kind of process to look at the public benefit criteria, and they didn't say that they weren't open to that, and I think they acknowledged that, yeah, 10 years has passed, and it's probably time to relook at them. And so we will go to the county board following this, if council adopts the resolution, and we will propose the same structure as we're proposing today for them to consider as well.
So potentially, they could choose not to pass that same motion, and then there wouldn't be a review?
I think we would come back to council before we would apply in that case.
Okay. Thank you.
But the initial indications are that they're interested in moving this forward.
Yes, I didn't get any pushback from them, as I recall, yeah.
All right. George?
Just two things about the public benefit criteria. One, I realize Chris and Claire were on that committee the last time. You know, I would like to participate in that, but since the Enterprise Zone is within Chris and Claire's ward, if Claire wants to do that, then I'm, you know, I will not ask to be put on that. And then the other question was, the committee, there's two people appointed by the council and two citizens appointed by the council. I don't remember how we did that the last time. Was it kind of an informal process, or was something put out to the public, you know, submit your names?
Yes, usually we do an invitation, advertise the opportunity, and then the mayor would nominate to the council potential members, and then council would select them. That's what we're proposing in this case.
But did we get a list of all of the people that asked to be considered, or was it just the names forwarded by the mayor?
I don't recall, but we could do either, I'm sure.
Yeah, I, if it's not an overwhelming number of people volunteering, I would like to see that list.
It probably won't be.
I'd like to see that list before, after the mayor makes the proposed nomination and before we actually take action on it.
Which is what we do with boards and commissions. We see all the applications, and then the mayor makes a nomination out of that. All right, I got myself, and then Betty in the queue. George, do you want to be in the first round? Okay. So I don't typically like Enterprise Zones or tax abatements, and I'm not in favor of them, mostly because people leave, when you do the research on it, people leave right after that tax abatement's gone, and mostly for big business, and there's no clawback ability to go back into that, and there's little to no public benefit other than the temporary jobs that are there. So, but in this case, I think this is particularly well-designed, answer all those issues for me, in that it does have a cap of $32,000 per job. There is a clawback provision that allows 25% of it be clawed back if they don't perform like they said they were going to be able to do, and it is limited in jurisdiction. It has been, for the large portion of it, been for small businesses, less than 50 employees, with the exception being Hynek's, but almost all of the other businesses have taken advantage of it, all been small businesses and local businesses. And then finally, the fact that there is this public benefits criteria that's built into it, which allows us to assure things like adequate wages and benefits, and redevelopment, and hiring, and health insurance, and small business investment. And then if we can add something on sustainability and climate change goals in there, that would make me think that that was also a big plus for this program. So with those kind of design things in here, I'm in favor of moving forward this Enterprise Zone, but typically, I don't like these things. Betty?
I'm typically and now both against it, but I just wanted to, I first raised my hand, I wanted to say, I don't think it matters whose ward it's in, we're all, the entire city is affected by our foregoing taxes or whatever we do. So I don't think that this is a case where it's, makes a difference whether the council representatives are in the same ward or not. Alan mentioned the clawback, potential clawback. It is only 25%. That means 75% of the tax abatement they get to keep regardless of what they do. So I don't think that is a very good deal. Thank you.
Claire?
Thank you. I appreciate Councilor Paulings' interest in serving on the review committee, and I wasn't a city councillor when I served on it, I was one of the citizen members, so I'm definitely open to that conversation with the mayor, if she's the one making the appointment. I agree with Councilor Taylor on that, that, you know, it's something that affects the entire city. I am curious, Denny, this ish, this question of us giving a tax break to a business and then it leaving right after the tax break expires, that was in fact what Sony did over in Springfield. They had a five-year tax break, it expired, they left town. Hynek's, I believe, stayed many years after their tax break expired. Have we had a situation where we gave a three- or five-year tax break, and the company up and left as soon as it was over?
Yeah, Hynek's is the one case, but if, they made several investments. The initial investment, of course, ran its course of three years, and they stayed several years after their initial investment. But if you recall, they did a couple of upgrades.
Oh, okay.
Major retooling, and those reinvestments got tax exemptions. So they were actually in their third kind of phase of tax exemptions when they closed, and they had to pay, repay, we talked about it last meeting, I can't remember the number, but it was in the millions, five million, I think, of tax benefit that they had received that they had to pay back because they, they shut down in the middle of receiving a tax exemption, yes.
And any other examples of other companies that?
That is the only one that I have recalled. Some have been disqualified, especially during the recession, because the recession hit for not meeting, they had layoffs, they remained in business, but they had to, they were disqualified. Those were smaller, smaller companies.
But they didn't actually leave Eugene?
Maybe one or two.
They're still doing business in Eugene.
They didn't leave, they just had, they were disqualified because they, they cut employment, and they didn't meet the job creation project.
Great. I mean, I just think, I mean, there's a perception, and then there's what actually happened, and I think it's important to be distinct.
Any other comments? Entertain a motion.
And of course, I'm making the motion because it's my function, not because I approve of it.
Soon be evident.
We shall soon see. I move to adopt Resolution 5155, a resolution authorizing the city manager to make application to the state of Oregon for re-designation of West Eugene Enterprise Zone.
Second. Any further discussion or comments? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. All those opposed? One, Kerry's. All right. Any conversation about the, if you wanted to add about the Enterprise?
Nothing to add.
Commerce zone? All right, then, Betty, you want to put the motion on the table?
I move to adopt Resolution 5156, a resolution of Eugene requesting that the West Eugene Enterprise Zone be re-designated for electronic commerce.
Second. Any further questions about that? Resolution?
It's not necessarily a question, but when the application is turned in for the re-designation on that, realizing that it's highly competitive to get one of these, and my understanding is, we haven't really taken advantage of it, but it's not because of our lack of wanting to, it's because of the economic times. Have you made contact with whoever gives the blessing on this to find out how they're going to read the lack of use of this versus the economy at the period of time?
Yeah, I think there, I think we expect there to be several communities that are interested in it, and the main driver primarily, and this is not new, is, is there a project that's ready to go? And the last time, we were looking at Hynek's as a potential data center, and that kind of drove our application in, at that point. We do have a prospect that I think would fit the criteria that we've had some discussions with, and whether or not that helps us or not, we will see. But there are some other communities that may have a project that's ready to go, but I don't know the details really, so that's really the driver.
Thank you.
Betty?
I'd like to point out that this could include call centers, which do not pay well and do not offer job security. Thank you.
All right. And the distinction between the e-commerce and the, and the West Eugene Enterprise Zone?
The basic distinction is, the Enterprise Zone is a property tax exemption, the e-commerce offers an income tax credit, which is a state income tax credit, so they are different.
Based on particular things that they can make investments in?
It's basically based on investments made to advance e-commerce, so equipment and so forth.
Right, okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Kerry's, 61. Next motion, please.
I direct the city manager, is that a motion, to move forward with the process to review the local West Eugene Enterprise public benefit criteria consistent with the city-county committee process used in 2005 and outlined in Attachment D, and bring back recommendations for updating the criteria following the committee's review.
Second. So just clarification, that last part of it means that the committee will make recommendations and then bring them back to council and Board of Commissioners?
That is correct.
And then we'll both act, and we both need to act simultaneously on the exact same thing for them to move forward?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Kerry's unanimous in seven to zero. All right. Thank you, Denny. Very efficient, where we were, one of the two. We're going to move into executive session at this point, and I have a little script to read.
Alan, before you move into executive session, if you would adjourn the meeting of the city council, open the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency?
Yep. I'll adjourn the city council meeting and open the meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency, which will now meet in executive session, held pursuant to ORS 192.660 sub 2 sub E, to discuss the negotiation of real property transaction. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed, I'm sorry. Specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state that the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session, and at the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. And we're good to go. So we are now in executive session. So, we are now in executive session. And reopen the city council, Eugene City Council meeting. And then, Counselor Brown, you have a motion.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'll make this motion and discuss the rationale for it after I get a second. I move that city council review the proposed stormwater user fees increase before the rate changes take effect.
Second.
Thank you. The, you know, there was the administrative order of the manager increasing these fees, but in the same packet, we saw an administrative order concerning the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission rate increase. And I serve on that commission, and we discussed that rate increase at length. We had very in-depth discussions of why the increase was necessary. We looked at the normal inflationary costs. Staff presented two or three different options. And we examined the financial position, you know, of the organization and why the increase was necessary to keep it on an even, you know, in a fiscally healthy position in the future, and what was needed to, you know, do the capital improvements that were planned. And so, and we chose the lower rate, but there was, a proposal was even a little bit lower. And that was not good because it was, we'd had to come back in about three or four years and bump it up again. So, we chose the middle path here. But the point is, we had, you know, a really nice discussion, and that rate increase was 3%. The one that's being proposed now for the stormwater users is 7.5%, 7.5%. That, to me, that seems high. So, I, you know, we haven't seen any kind of a rationale for the rate increase. It's way above the inflation rate. There's, there was no explanation of why this was tied to the overall needs of this, of the system. We don't know exactly what the rate, the increase is going to be used for, like we did with, with the Metropolitan Wastewater. We don't know. I'm assuming that everything will be spent on stormwater services, but, you know, there was a proposal a while back to use a part of the stormwater fees for park maintenance. And so, I just feel like we need to discuss it, and, because we're kind of, you know, we're the representatives of the rate payers. And, and I'm not, I wouldn't even dream of predicting the outcome of our discussion. I have no idea. We may just decide, hey, let's leave it at 7.5%. That makes good sense. But I just feel like we need to discuss it a little bit more. Or, it's possible, we could say, well, gee, maybe that's a little too high. Maybe it could be 5% or 4 or 3. I mean, I, I really don't know. I'm not going to try to even predict. I don't have a specific position to advocate for or anything. But I, I feel that we owe it to our rate, you know, to the residents who are the rate payers, to, to have a discussion about it and just explore it a little more deeply.
If I put myself in the queue, then Mike, then George. City Manager, maybe you can outline your authority as the city manager to take administrative action on fee increases in general. And then, I have a specific question about this one.
I'll answer the general one, and then city manager can answer specifics. Kurt's also here. For most fees under the city code, the manager has the authority to adopt them following a public input process. There's a proposed fee increase. Depending on the amount of that increase, it may or may not get published in the paper, goes out to interested parties, you guys get notice. There's at least a 15-day comment period that people have to make comments. Following that, a proposed administrative order is prepared that responds, acknowledges what the comments were, responds to comments, says, yep, good comment, we changed something, we disagree with the comment, we didn't change something. That gets signed, and the fees go into effect automatically. There are some fees, stormwater rates, storm sewer rates, there's, I think, some of the airport fees, follow the same process up until the city manager issues the final order adopting the rates. And for there, like here, the code says those rates do not go into, the new rates do not go into effect for 11 days. And if a majority of the council, which means five of you, decide that you want to review them, then the rate would not go into effect until after you've had your review, and you either affirm the rate, you change the rate, or you just flat-out deny it. So, that's where we are right now. We're in that 10-day period that you have to request review. If five of you request review, and passing the motion would be comparable to that, but it's got to be passed with five votes, then the stormwater rate would not, the new rate would not go into effect until after you've had a work session and decided what you wanted to do.
And Mr. City Manager, you sent out a memo to council outlining some of this, but maybe you can review it again. Why was it 7.5%? What kind of input did you have? And if you could re-characterize that for us? And, and what are the limitations on the use of stormwater funds? I know that it can't be used on anything.
Sure, I'll try and answer that. The rate increase is above what we would typically consider CPI for probably a variety of reasons. First, there's a catch-up component. I think you might recall that we've held rates at zero in some years where we opted not to go with an inflationary increase. These were primarily in the years when the general fund was having a struggle, so, in the interest of stewardship and trying to get through those times, we didn't, didn't pass along an inflationary rate. So, there's a, there's a process of catching up. Another component is--
When was the last time it was raised, Kurt?
Pardon me?
When was the last time it was raised?
I believe it was increased last year as well. And I'd be happy to bring in some of the historic data. I look back as far as 1999, which is just slightly before I arrived here. Looking at the numbers, I believe there are nine times that it was zero, and other times it was, you might recall that at one point, there was a shift of quite a number of stormwater services that were being paid by the general fund. So, you'll, you'll see some spikes in those rates over time, but on average, I think there were eight or nine times that we didn't, didn't pass through a rate increase. I believe there was a rate increase a year ago in July, can't remember that number. Second component we deal with is our street maintenance work that we've had underway for a number of years. A, a spin-off effect of that is there's a significant amount of stormwater capital upgrading and improvement that goes along with that, whether it's catch basin inlets, whether it's other stormwater amenities that are associated with that that have really pinched the capital side of what's available in the stormwater utility each year. So, we do a little catch-up on that, and in fact, are not at the number we ought to be with that. Third major component, I think, is that, I think, as you're all well aware, in, over the past 10 or 12 or more years, we've shifted from what we'd call the traditional mechanical type stormwater treatment systems to the green infrastructure. The, the plus of that is it's more environmentally sustainable, gives us a cheaper treatment option than if we were pushed into a full-blown stormwater treatment facility, much like we have for wastewater. The, the flip side of that is that it does cost more on the O&amp;M side to take care of those types of grassed waterways, open channels, as opposed to sending a vac truck out to pump out catch basins. So, it's, it's the catch-up provision, it's the squeeze on the capital side of the equation, and it's the increased cost of green infrastructure that, that's pushed us there. I think, second part of your question was, what's the money used for? The money is used for stormwater utility purposes. That's broken down by--
Oops.
Yeah. A list of services that are specifically tied to our NPDES stormwater permit, and there are pieces that have specifically been added in through the budget process that are not necessarily a requirement of the permit, but have a stormwater nexus and are services that have been deemed as important to the community. Maybe among those would be the riverbank cleanup of the Willamette. It's not, not something that EPA says that's a mandatory part of your permit, but it's something that as a community, you've indicated you want to have done. So, there are services like that in the, in the stormwater utility rate, so.
And the last part was, what input have you received? What input have you received from, are there stakeholders or public?
I think the, the input on this is subsequent to the, the process that Glenn laid out, the public hearing drew, as he was inclined to do. Five or six speakers. I don't know that we've received more than a handful of other inquiries from the, from the community on it. The results of, of the public hearing were included in the packet that went out.
All right, thank you. Mike, and then George.
This is for either of you. There, I want to ask this the right way. There have been a couple of times, I know, because I've made the motions in budget committee discussions, where we've, as you've just put it, found community benefit in services provided by those dollars, like the cleanup and so forth. We've used that as a mechanism, I think, to, we have, not suggested by you, the council has decided to use that as a mechanism by which we get to a balanced budget on a couple of occasions. What I would not want to do is have those actions that I took be directly responsible for a fee increase that wasn't my intent in the first place. That's why I would want to examine this a little bit more so that I could be wiser in my future choices. And, and thus why I would maybe vote yes, so I could understand this better, and we take the time to talk about our, our choices as a council, and that, you know, the things we ask of you guys. I might be interested in, in voting in favor, just so that we make better policy. I also think from a secondary face, we often get, the council often gets accused of, you know, shuffling budget dollars around intentionally. And I don't think that's a fair statement or, or charge, but I think the more we shine light a day in our process and learn from that, I think that we're less susceptible to those type of charges from the public as well. So, I think there may be some value in just taking one meeting to, to take a look at this and talk about how we have affected it as a council with our choices, so.
George Polling, and then Chris Pryor, and then second round, George Brown.
Some of my questions and comments have already been covered, but I do have one question about the budget, and this is the budget that the council's yet to approve. How does the proposed rate increase or any change that we may or may not make, how will that affect next year's budget?
It could take a number of forms. We are in the catch-up mode and are not operating the stormwater utility with the full two-month operating reserve. My sense is that the, the balance available that would remain without this increase would, would, would make it a little questionable as to whether we could move ahead without bringing in some reduction package to, to recognize that. But just, just laying out the options, one would be to push, push the, push the service model ahead as contemplated in the budget until the balance available goes to zero. Wouldn't recommend that. Second would be to roll back and, and bring back some, some decision package for removing some of the services from the, from program for the, for the coming year. Alternative would be, for example, a delayed implement, implementation, or some lesser increase that, in, in my opinion, would have the effect of pushing, pushing out on future, future rate increases. I might mention that in the, in the forecast for the stormwater utility, given, given these competing factors that are driving the current rate, with this increase, we're still projecting 4% to 6% annual increases through the, through the forecast period for the, for the catch-up process. So, going to something less than 7.5% this year, or 0% this year, to the extent you ultimately decide you want to have those services provided, and especially in addition to those required by the permit, you'd, you'd be looking at incrementally higher, higher numbers in the, in the out-years. So, for the coming year, it's going to have a, a range of possible effects.
And, John, how would this, if Georgia's motion passes, how and when would this review occur?
Do we have a timeline on it? What we do is find an available work session to come back to the council on this conversation. What I would say is, it probably would be useful to have the conversation regardless of how you vote on the, on the motion. So, if you vote yes, we would, of course, come back. If you choose no, we would also, I recommend, come back and have a broader conversation as well. And so, in either case, if it, if it applies, if this is a yes vote, we would want to come back before your break would be sooner than better for us. If you wanted to have the broader conversation, it could be before the break, it could also be after the break, because it's not as time-sensitive at that point.
Yeah, in fact, I think this last comment really got at the essence of what I was going to talk about. I am, I really appreciate George bringing this issue forward, because I think it's always nice to review fees and charges. But I, I think we've accomplished, for this particular fee increase, a lot of what I would have wanted to, I mean, we, that's kind of what we're doing right now. You've explained why that rate has increased, what the justification for it, where it goes. And I really agree with Mike in terms of having that more robust conversation about fees and charges, because I think it's an area where a lot of people can be concerned that the city is abusing its fee and permit and charge opportunities, using it wrong ways, applying it in, in bad places. And so, I think it's really worthwhile to have a good conversation about what our fee and charge and permit system is, what it goes for, what it can't go for, how it works. And so, I think a full conversation about that is, is a really good idea. I think this motion creates a constraint that doesn't need to be there in order to actually make this happen. I, I agree with you, I think we should have the conversation. I don't think we have to hold up the current rate system, which can affect some of the operational things you want to do while we're waiting for that to take place. I think, I would say, this motion has accomplished what it set out to do. And so, I don't need to vote for it to have accomplished a lot of what it was set out to do, and, and yet, in addition, also get the conversation about fees and charges that were, that I'm hearing the council saying they would like to have. So, I think, I don't have to vote for this now, because I think its purpose has been served. You've explained what the current fee is for. I think you've heard that we do want to have a more robust conversation about what fees and charges are for and how they work beyond stormwater, just in general. And I'm very happy with that. I think that's a good idea. So, now, I don't, I don't need to vote in favor of this, but I think the spirit of what this was intended to do is a good one, and I think what you're hearing is, we would like to continue to pursue this, but not hold up this specific rate increase right now at this time in order to be able to accomplish that.
Going to round two?
Thank you. I actually think it'd be good if we have a discussion every time there's a fee increase. Usually, we just see a notice, and maybe somebody makes a comment, and then the fee goes into effect, period. But I had a question about the, the depressed areas at 29th and Amazon Parkway. Is that stormwater cleaning on each side of the street?
Yes.
You know where I'm talking about?
I believe so, yeah.
What, was that, was that with the stormwater fees? It was, it took a long time, it was very expensive, I'm sure, to put it in.
Trying to, trying to picture exactly which project you're talking about, because we've had, we've had sidewalks--
There's some new sidewalks, there's depression in the ground, and some kinds of plants that are dying.
I think--
That's at Amazon and 29th.
I said, Amazon Parkway and 29th.
Part of the rebuild. It was, I believe, and I can double-check this, I believe we had a safe roost-to-school sidewalk program that integrated some stormwater improvements with it.
Stormwater, yeah.
Well, that's supposed to be stormwater cleaning. But then, I think it was today, or maybe yesterday, I saw a truck there with a hose watering it. And, so, I just wondered if that's saving money, if you have to send a truck in to water the plants.
Yeah, I, I would suggest when, when we come back and talk about some of the nuances of the green infrastructure, we could get into more detail, but for today, I would say that, yes, and as you look at the MX route and other areas of town where traditional stormwater pipe systems are being either complemented or replaced with the grassy swales and that type of thing, there is a, a getting started process to get the, the plants up and growing. It adds to the, the operating and maintenance costs I was referring to, longer-term, you don't have to go and water that on a, on a regular basis. I, I suspect what you're seeing is, is the startup operation of that, getting, getting things established.
Okay, thank you.
Round two, George Brown, and then Mike.
Thank you. Well, you know, having a little more in-depth review, I don't think it's going to put any particular constraint on current operations. Kurt mentioned that, you know, there's like a little bit under two months' worth of operating funds to, in reserve, you know, so, you know, if we had a work session in a month, it's, it's not going to really cause it, any problems for public works. I do have a question, though. Is the rate increase, the proposed rate increase, is, is it included in the FY budget that was approved by the Budget Committee?
Yes.
But not, yeah, okay, so that's already--
The projected revenues from it are included--
Right, okay.
In our, in our projection, yes.
Yeah, it was, well, see, that was it, with the, with the kind of our scaled-down budget documents, you know, there was really no way to look at that whole thing and find out. You know what I mean? It was, it was kind of abbreviated information. That's why it'd be nice to have, look a little bit more expanded, see how much, you know, how do the, the, the green infrastructure, the bio drains, the, how does all that play out, where does the money go? Is it actually saving money, or is it necessary for regulatory purposes, you know, to maintain the permits and everything? I don't know. And so, I still, I think we should still do this. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, number one. Have we, from a, I suppose it's probably a capital perspective, have we dealt with all the drywells liabilities that we had as a city, and if, how about the county stuff in Santa Clara? I know that a couple of years back, we had an awful lot of things to deal with in that realm.
The which liabilities?
The drywells.
Oh, drywells. Ongoing, ongoing process, and we, we actually managed that through a combination of mitigating some periodically that we don't see that there will be an alternative means of dealing with, and continue to work with the, the state DEQ on, on the rule-making process to see whether some actually need, need to be removed or not. So, trying not to do what we don't have to do.
Right. But we do still have many that are on city property that we have to, at some point, contend with?
Yes.
Okay.
Contending with might, might mean reporting--
Right.
And managing performance might, might not mean--
Fill in, depends on state law, got it. I appreciate Chris's point. I, I was actually bringing this more, more pointedly than I probably expressed clearly, which is that, while there are things that, while I know all decisions have consequences that we make at this table, intended or otherwise, one of the, I, I didn't want one of the unintended consequences of solving a budget problem to be an automatic fee increase when that wasn't a part of the discussion in the first place. What I wouldn't want it to have had to happen is say, well, we can help bridge the budget gap by doing this, and having some of this money from over here, use this one time in this way, without having brought up, at that same time, that means a fee, a stormwater fee increase of X amount of dollars, which wasn't a part of that conversation. So, I want to try and connect those things and talk about those consequences before we agree, before we allow a fee increase to take place, so that we're making that decision consciously, and, you know, having a more thorough conversation about what are really the costs that we think are worth it or not, with the green infrastructure questions that we're, we're deciding here. So, you know, we're, we're making a very deliberate decision that if we're going to do things differently, then this is the cost, and we agree to pay it. So, I, I think I probably will vote in favor of it for that.
Any other further? So, motion, if the motion on the table passes, we'll do it before the break. If it fails, we'll bring back a broader conversation sometime after the break, so.
Could be before the break, but could be also after the break.
Yeah.
Right, but that would be a broader conversation.
A broader conversation.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion?
Might as well, of course.
I don't mind.
All those opposed? All right, so it passes. Any other business with that? I'll adjourn the city council.